We're probably just a distraction. Even those so and so's wouldn't put power lines directly over the schoolyard. But then again, why build them in a supposed to be a scenic corridor? The solution that we attempted to push for was underground planning things. It's too expensive, we're told. The town and/or the citizens are going to have to pay for it. APS isn't going to pay for it. Well, yeah, somebody has to pay for it. And in the end, it would be the taxpayer and the utility rate payers. APS will pass it along to us one way or another. But it need not be nearly as expensive as APS professes. The problem is they have no interest in reducing the cost. So there's no impetus for them to reduce their costs for that or anything for that reason. We need to force underground things about utilities. We need to force our politicians to take any of the main powers away from the utilities now. They abuse that privilege and we are left paying for it one way or the other. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carol Perry. Mayor, Council, persons. My name's Carol Perry. I live in Cave Creek on Sommeil Circle. I'm here because I read that Steve was tired of looking at the same faces in the front row. And to talk about a topic that's not on the agenda because I've learned that sometimes when you think you're waiting until the right time, you've waited too late. I want to talk about the horses at the ends of town, the south end and the east end. When I first heard that there was a bid out for these horse sculptures, and I knew, for some reason, I knew they were going to be cowboy relative emblems of our town and that a lot of money was going to be spent, I wasn't exactly thrilled about it. But I have to say, when these horses went up, I was amazed and I was thrilled about it because this isn't just a horse community. I recognize that it is a big horse community, but it's also a community of artists, it's a community of a lot of diverse kinds of people. And these sculptures, to me, represent not just horses, but contemporary art and a mix of a very diverse kind of town and citizenship that makes them so outstanding as an elegant welcome to our town. With the exception of the fact that I waited a year for them to be finished, and they kind of look, especially the one on the south end of town, it looks kind of like it just fell in the ditch. So I'm here just to ask if we can soon landscape and maybe put in a piece of solar lighting or something. I mean, I would volunteer to rake weeds and put in some nice landscaping. It just would look so much better if it looked finished. And I think it's a great way to welcome people to town, but the fact that it doesn't show at night at all, for some reason, it's not reflected, I think it's a little bit dangerous. So that's why I asked for the lighting as well. So I just want you to know before you make a decision in some other direction, because obviously the rumors are flying as to what might happen to these horses. Don't spend a lot of money moving them. Don't get rid of them. Just make them finish. Finish them so that they look as beautiful as they should look where they are. And the only other thing I want to say, if I have two more seconds, is a lot of my friends live up there by the water treatment plant. I'm so thrilled to see all this stuff on the agenda because I've tried to go to dinner parties in the backyard sometimes and it's not pleasant. So hopefully you're really going to fix this before somebody sues us because they cancel their house because of Steve's out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary.
Rachel Monica Kena. 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 Rachel Monica Kena.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm Paul Diefender, Cave Creek citizen, landowner, business owner. I'm here tonight to talk about your selection of the Sonoran News for the publication of the town's legal notices. There were several passionate speakers on this issue in the last council meeting. It's not your job to control what the Sonoran News prints. There are some, possibly many, who might say it's often vile, disgusting, ignorant, or hateful. Free speech is one of the cornerstones of this country, and the government is obliged to let free speech remain so. It is your job to be good stewards of the town's finances. Spending more than the lowest price for such mundane things as legal notices is wrong. The argument that this decision was made for public benefit is bogus. Yes, the Sonoran News is delivered to all Cave Creek addresses. And if you've been to the post office after it's been delivered, it sure looks like most of them end up in the trash bins. After the town switched from the Sonoran News to the Arizona Republic, was there a great outcry from Creekers? No. It sure looks like the only person in town that wanted you to publish legal notices in the Sonoran News was the publisher of the Sonoran News. According to the analysis provided you by the Sonoran News, you are spending over three times what you need to spend for legal publication. You are not being good financial stewards. You should publish the town's notices and achieve as legal newspaper available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Mayor, members of council, my name's Bill Allen. I reside at 38914 North Seventy-third Street. I'm here to report on the water rights settlement that we're working on for Spurcross. As you may well know, the town owns one-third of Spurcross. The county and the state own the rest, and the county manages it, not the state. There was a water right that existed in 1925 that was filed for mining and milling of water. The total amount that was required for this certificate of water right was eighteen hundred and ten acre feet. That's about two-thirds of what the town actually has, and that's a lot to see a P. I've worked on this project now for quite some time. Today, we were fortunate enough to gain the approval of the Buckeye Water Conservation and Irrigation District. The need for that approval is because water that we take here in Cave Creek actually ends up in the Buckeye area. So it's a rather secure disrute. You go through a flood control channel and into the Scott Creek and then into Agua Priya and then down to the confluence with the hill. The thing about it is that board of directors approved unanimously the water right applications for severance, transfer, and use of the water from mining and milling to recreation, wildlife, and fish. It's quite unusual that Department of Water Resources would move in that direction, but they have done so. The water right that was originally initiated in 1925 was for a well that sat just below the confluence of Cottonwood Creek and the Cave Creek Creek. That well took water from the subflow of the channel, and therefore it was considered in 1925 to be a surface water right. Quite unusual, because at that point in time, it was either groundwater taken from a well or surface water taken from the creek. But I just wanted to bring you up to date on where we are. The town will ultimately receive five hundred and fifty-eight acre feet. The county will receive the remainder of the eighteen hundred and ten acre feet, and that's based solely on the ownership. The county and the state own two-thirds of the land. We own one-third of it. And this will service the area below the jewel of the creek and also the face night sight. Thank you very much.
Mary.
I have my other slips.
Does anyone else wish? Mr. Ringo.
Johnny Ringo, resident of Cave Creek. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, thank you for this opportunity to express my feelings. A close friend of mine told me, "Don't build your house, your life, on shifting sands. Build it upon a rock." Our country has moved from the rock to shifting sands. And I'm not here, the rock is God, and I'm not here to preach. I see the sand shifting in my life and also in our town. People, places, things are essential but are not the foundation of our lives. They can all go away one by one. Our Cave Creek lifestyle is going away one by one. Community participation years ago was amazing. Now it's just a handful of the same people, and they are going away one by one. Shops in the creek are going away one by one. Our town is divided. We had an election, then we have a recall. Are we going to have another recall? The council has lost the trust of Cave Creek residents one by one. Now we have the dark side. What's the other side? The light side, the white side? I don't know anymore which side I'm on, and I am not going to choose. We all heard, great people, residents, citizens, saying that they are disgusted and not going to town meetings anymore. We are losing them one by one. We also lost Riata Pass, Greenswood Flats, Pinnacle Peak. They are gone, one by one. The town of Cave Creek should put all your resources together and figure out how we can capture those customers, and I will help you with that. Instead, we now replacing cowboys, cowboy hats, boots, and horses for bicycles, helmets, cleats, and spandex. And now we have a town within a town. We are losing our western heritage one by one. I finally understand that all that is going on is built on shifting sand. I will not make the mistake of picking the rock, my god, for granted. I ride my horse Mac every Saturday or Sunday for breakfast in the water mountain for him in town. Why? Because I will not let anyone steal my dream. The fate, the future of our unique lifestyle, where the wild west lives, lies on your watch, Mr. Mayor, lies on your watch, Vice Mayor, and lies on your watch, Council. But it also lies on my watch and everyone in this town hall's watch. I'm going to read a paragraph from the Cave Creek cares, and it went something like this. "Cave Creek is the old west; Cave Creek is the new west." During the planning, there was some discussion about being a subdivision of Cave Creek. However, according to grandfather, and they were referring to Katie Palmer, which you all should know, Cave Creek residents were an independent-minded people. It seemed unlikely they would be part of a planned community because of our independent spirit. It also said, "Cave Creek, featuring well-known saloons, western shops, rodeos, events, galleries, and music, has become one of the most recognized western towns in U.S. and remains reminiscent of what the wild west might have been a century ago." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ringo. The public is still open, if anyone wishes to speak. Okay, council's going to proceed. Marshall Stein, you weren't here, but we will be thanking you for keeping the community safe over and managing along with.
No fires?
A lot of fireworks, but no fire. That's good. Town manager, anything? We're going to move into the consent. There are four items on consent. I'll move the second all those and figure this out.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Thank you, council. Citizens, as you noticed, this is an ambitious agenda before council tonight, so if you want to speak on any item, when you hear the three minutes, that will have to keep to make it through. Item number one, council discussion and appointment of two residents to fill two vacancies on the town of Cave Creek Planning Commission. This item was continued from the June fifteenth meeting. The procedure is we'll go to public comment first. If any of the applicants are here for PMZ, they, in turn, they speak and council may ask questions. And then it will come to council and I will ask for nominations and council for the vote. I have been advised by the town clerk, is that correct, that John Fordham has withdrawn one of the applicants?
That is correct.
Has withdrawn his name. Okay. So we'll go to public comment first. Is there any public comment on item number one? Okay, let's go to the applicants. Mr. Corliss, did you wish to address the council?
Sure. Richard Call, I'm a resident of Cave Creek. I've lived here since 2003. I have posted on my property, though I don't go through small time. The website, you saw my resume, I've been in industry a lot. More recently, I started a small business that is based out of my home, that has been growing over the last twelve years. In addition to my professional life, I've done a lot of volunteering. When my kids were smaller, I helped the soccer programs. I moved to Cave Creek, I helped with the elections, I held in the group. Professionally, what I have been most successful at has been making things happen. Typically, I had worked with teams that had multiple motivations and management, wanted to keep the money. White engineers wanted to have the best technology, customers wanted to have everything for nothing. Marketing wanted something they could sell real easily. And somewhere between all those things, I managed to find a base and write down what we're going to do and then go do it. I think that's what we need in the planning committee. I think the primary aim of that planning committee is to avoid surprises, and what I mean by a surprise. If I wake up in the morning and there's a higher urgency behind me, that's a surprise. And I look at Everton Mountain, I see the Eiffel Tower King puts on there, that's a surprise. So what we're trying to do is build on the general plan that needs to evolve, and we need to set it up in a way to avoid surprises. So that's what I can do. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. We're going, Mr. Corliss, thank you. Ms. Damon, Susan Damon.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Susan Damon, resident of Cave Creek. Just real quickly, in my interest in serving on the planning commission is because I feel like I have a unique perspective to offer you as far as service on that commission. My background is as an architect, an urban planner, and now an attorney that specializes in both real estate and hand used matters. I spend my days interpreting, reviewing, working with municipalities across the valley, helping them interpret their ordinances, guide these ordinances. And my perspective, you know, through this professional experience, I think allows me to come to my hometown, Cave Creek, and use our general plan, our zoning ordinances, our guidelines, and to use my professional experience in working with those types of regulatory schemes to help further the vision of the town of Cave Creek. I mean, I think we all live here for same but different reasons. We love this eclectic desert community. It has a very unique style. And I offer my background to help use our regulatory scheme to the benefit of to further our goals. So that's why I'm here.
Questions from council? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Damon. Richard Frye? Richard Frye?
Evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. I've been a resident of Cave Creek. And in the last ten or fifteen years, it's been most of my time in the Spurcross area, may have loaned me Spurcross area. And we have horses, and we have enjoyed and taken advantage of all that Cave Creek has always had to offer as a place. The stores, the restaurants, all the entertainments here has been a part of our life to enjoy, not so much to participate, but to enjoy. My background is land development. It's engineering, surveying, and project management. I've probably processed a hundred or two hundred zoning cases, subdivisions, and all kinds of development. Spent a lot of time on conditions of approval and stipulations and all sorts of things. But I think what I've found the most valuable for me is to be able to try to pull people together to come to a solution, rather than meet someone, I could say this is the way it's going to be, like to find a way to get everybody together. Thank you. Any questions?
Questions from council? We're going, Mr. Frye. Thank you. I've been advised via email, Mr. Jensen, I believe is out of town. He is one of the applicants. And that is all of the applicants, so the procedure from here is I will give nominations. Council will nominate. The nominations do not require a second. Vice Mayor of the market starts out. I want to get Frye. Nominations, Mr. Frye's name has been nominated, a councilman bunch. And we nominate, so he has it. Ms. Damon has been nominated. Nominations are still open. The chair will close the nominations. We will call vote, I think we can do voice vote on this. Richard Frye, all those in favor of Mr. Frye being appointed to the planning and planning commission, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Frye, congratulations. Susan Damon, the second of the nominees. All those in favor of Ms. Damon, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. Congratulations to you both. Oh, there you are. Congratulations. Want to do item number two, council discussion, approval of second amendment to a lease agreement between Maricopa County and the town of Cave Creek for the lease of three four hundred and thirty-two square feet of office space for Maricopa County Sheriff's Office, Town Manager.
Mayor and council, we just have an extension of the existing lease, certain at five years. We're looking at an increase in the square footage from sixteen to fifty per square foot, about twenty dollars and cents per square foot, which will realize seven hundred between fifteen and sixteen thousand dollars in increase. We also agreed that we would cost share, redoing the floors. It's about a price of fourteen thousand, so they would pay about seven thousand, we would pay about seven thousand. It also has some common area improvements like outside lighting and take care of some of the parking lot issues out there. That's another estimated cost of three thousand to five thousand. Very happy with the sheriff's office in town. We have our contract community with Maricopa Sheriff's Office, so this is my idea, it's my win-win agreement for the next five years, and it increases, offsets some of our costs and keeps it happy in it and keeps the town happy, I agree.
Questions for the town manager from council? Anything else, town manager?
I just want to think, Tom Marshall, he is instrumental in negotiating this agreement, but so I want to take him.
There is public comment on item number two. Okay, we are back to council. Council and bunch, thank you.
I move to approve the second amendment to the lease, proceeds, L-7301, close proceeds between Maricopa County and the town of Cave Creek for the lease of office space for Maricopa County Sheriff's Office.
Motion made, a second, council and bunch?
I think we need, ladies and gentlemen, everybody else needs a lockup facility in their building. Truly.
Nothing further needed. That'll work. Anything else from council? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. By the way, councilman McGuire is in vice room. Attend item number three, presentation, council discussion, authorized staff and or wondered advisory committee to explore drought mitigation strategies such as water banking and your exchanges with other companies and see water conservation program. Yes, Mr. Hammond?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm pleased to be here. I am Bill Mattingly, a Cave Creek resident, and I'm here representing your water advisory committee. And as the presentation comes up, so this presentation is largely going to be informational. On April twenty-second, earlier this year, myself, David Prince, our utilities manager, a number of other folks from all across Arizona, attended a Colorado River shortage workshop hosted by the Arizona Department of Water Resources and the Central Arizona Project. And they provided a lot of background on what's going on with the drought, because we hear a lot of that in the media. So we want to provide a little bit of information of what it means to Cave Creek. So the Colorado River system, including Lake Powell and Lake Mead, are the water supply to the Central Arizona Project. Cave Creek has a subcontract to Central Arizona water, and that capacity is equal to two thousand nine hundred ninety-two acre feet. We're not using all of that water, and in 2014, we used approximately two thousand two hundred eighty-eight acre feet. And just for context, an acre feet will supply two families for a year. It's generally what that's seen. Lot of information on this graph, but the big takeaway that I want you to get from this graph is that seventy percent of the Central Arizona water from the Colorado River is allocated to agricultural and tribal interests, and only twenty-one percent is actually used So what happens in a potential shortage on the Colorado River? Well, it's going to be determined by the Bureau of Reclamation. And how do they do that? They do that by measuring water levels in Lake Mead, and when they reach certain thresholds, they declare shortages based on what they define as tier one, tier two, tier three. And I won't get into the details of those, but what's important here is that when they have a shortage, what it impacts is the agricultural interest. It does not, it does not impact under those first three tiers what they call municipal and industrial customers. We, as residents in this Cave Creek water company, we are defined as municipal and industrial customer. And again, we're only using twenty-one percent of that overall capacity there. So even as you have shortages on the Colorado River, they're going to impact others long before they will impact Cave Creek. So this is what the Arizona Department of Water Resources had to say about the drought. Real important, this was their message, this is for data. Arizona's not in a crisis. We're not California. Water supplies in Arizona are resilient. There are going to be some localized impacts in some rural areas of the state where they don't have Central Arizona water, but that's not the case here in Cave Creek. don't have Central Arizona water, but that's not the case here in Cave Creek. The state Arizona Water Banking Authority has stored water. They have water for supporting the Central Arizona Project equivalent to two years' worth of storage. They stored it underground. And the Bureau of Reclamation, CAP, and Arizona are all working together with others to mitigate the impacts of the demands on the Colorado River. So what can Cave Creek do? We should seek opportunities for groundwater storage. For those, Bill Allen, Dr. Allen will be first to tell you that there's not a lot of opportunities right here in Cave Creek. That doesn't mean we can't engage in some exchanges. And I talked about the difference between what we use on annual basis and what our allocations are. Those may be an opportunity to do some exchanges. We should talk with the Arizona Water Banking Authority to look at some supply contingencies. And again, looking at our CAP surplus, surplus today, and it won't always be surplus, but while we have them, see if we can use those for some exchanges. And then seeking other alternative supplies in addition to our CAP. There's other things we can do. Increase our water conservation as individuals and as town. Seek opportunities to maximize our use of our effluent to the degree they're not committed otherwise. Look at opportunities for our non-potable water. Some of our wells don't meet drinking water standards, but some of those wells can be used for other purposes that are not drinking water. We can increase our education and awareness on our website, and the Water Advisory Committee has developed some ideas for the website. Your water manager has some ideas about some water consumption calculators. We can do water audits to help people understand how much water they're consuming. You can reduce the water at individuals' homes by putting individual pressure-reducing valves. A number of us already have those valves installed. If you step those lower, that will reduce your water demand. And there's other techniques such as rainwater harvesting. And certainly, leak detection and leak reduction is important for water conservation. So these are things that we would recommend that the town undertake, that we direct staff to undertake, and certainly, the members of the Water Advisory Commission, the committee, are ready to assist staff in all of these endeavors. Thank you.
If council were to approve this, when do you think you could report back to council?
Mr. Mayor, I would think that a report back in ninety days would be appropriate.
Are we ready for questions? We are in question, so the end of October?
Yes.
Not already?
Yes.
November? Yes, questions?
Mr. Mattley, a good friend of mine was Robert Manning. He was the executive director of the Municipal Water Foundation. And I go back to Arizona is not in a crisis. He always told me that Arizona has plenty of water, we just don't have a delivery system. And I understand that. I think Dr. Allen has been working on water, groundwater storage for twenty years, if I remember. And if you did these things, the thing that concerned me the most was the area about exchanges. What's in it for Cave Creek? We have a surplus that we don't have to share with anyone. So what's in it for the town?
Counselor Esser, what's in it for Cave Creek? I mean, under any of these scenarios, there has to be something in it for Cave Creek. There's no sense in doing it.
That's my question.
So what would you do in terms of an exchange? Exchange would be, we have surplus credits that we're not using. We have water allocation that we're not using. Allow perhaps someone else to use them, some other city to use those on a short term for their actual year-to-year demand, and we create some sort of demand, or some sort of exchange, so that in lean years, when the water's not available in the Central Arizona Project, we might get that delivered directly from a community, we might get that through a series of credits through a community. There's a lot of different ways to do those exchanges, but what we'll be doing is not giving away anything, but we're banking water for the future.
If we did the exchange, how would we get the water back? And/or are they going to reimburse us for acre foot, or how does it work?
That's all to be explored. We would look for, there's opportunities that they might actually pay as they, as they use those credits on the annual basis. There may be opportunities for them to directly deliver that. For example, maybe it's something that comes from the city of Scottsdale, through the Carefree system, to Cave Creek in times of shortage. Or it might just be credits that we accumulate and get delivered through the Water Banking Authority.
As you know, we currently get far graphs in our water bills to show how much we used last year. On the last page, it said about individual pressure-reducing valves and other items, leak detection, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm assuming your committee will come back with some recommendations as to how to implement those things?
Counselor, yes, a number of those have already been developed by the committee. But what we would like to do is get some of those out on the website, get the revisions on the website, and just use whatever communication vehicles are available to us.
Is this ninety-day study going to cost anything?
No, sir. So this is, what I would expect we're going to be doing would be to, talking to the Arizona Water Banking Authority, talking to the Central Arizona Groundwater Reinishment District, talking to some of our other communities, Carefree, Scottsdale, Phoenix, and see what opportunities are out there. See if there's an interest. But again, it has to be a win-win for Cave Creek.
I know who you are, and I know where you work. Peoria considered anything like this?
Counselor, our water portfolio in the city of Peoria is very different than what we have here in Cave Creek. It's very diverse, and there's been a lot of planning that's going on there for a number of decades. So we're not looking at precisely these kinds of things, but we are looking at a backup to a backup to a backup.
Could you do this in ninety days?
Counselor, we're not going to get this done in ninety days, but what I would expect is that we're actually going to be exploring what's possible. So this is all very preliminary, and to your point earlier, it doesn't cost anything to ask the questions.
And we have lead people that are going to make these contacts and negotiations. Based on the past action of the Water Advisory Committee, I'm concerned about some of the things that were misinterpreted, not as recommendations, but as suggestions of things that need to be done, and that turned out not to be the truth.
Counselor, what I would recommend is that this needs to be led by staff. The Water Advisory Committee really doesn't have standing with these other communities or these agencies, so it needs to be led by staff, either your Town Manager or your manager for the utilities. And then certainly, I and other members of the committee would be right there to be side-by-side with them. That's all I have at this time.
Questions? Councilman Lewski?
Hi, good evening. After the ninety days, you come back with, among other things, suggestions for using the effluent and the non-potable water, or how to implement that use?
Counselor, what I expect after ninety days would be to report back to you what we've learned, what's possible, where those opportunities lie, and what makes sense for further exploration. Again, too, Counselor Esser's comment, it needs to make sense for Cave Creek. If it doesn't make sense, if there's nothing to be done there, then we've lost nothing. We've spent some time exploring what's possible.
Would there be any action items, do you think, after the ninety days?
My thought would be that we would come up with a list of those things that bear further book, and maybe getting into more detail with those.
Okay. One last thing is, how does Bill Allen's report on the water rights settlement and the 558 acre feet, that it sounds like we've won back? How does that impact what you just presented, what it does at all?
Well, I think it has some, some impact in that it adds to the town's overall water portfolio. To begin with, Counselor Esser's comment about, you know, what have we done in other communities? You go after any water rights that you can and use them any way you can reasonably use those. In this case, I would expect that those water rights would be more available for the non-potable uses, or as Dr. Allen was referring to, at the Phoenix Mine Site for those recreational purposes. I think that's why they were so unanimously approved, to make sure that the town and the county got those.
So that's likely not potable? None of that would be potable?
I'd have to defer to Dr. Allen, but I don't believe that those would convert to a potable supply.
Only a very small portion available. The main purpose is to make sure that we have the water to support the ovarian habitat and the flows that occur, and the flows that occur at Cave Creek and groundwater, and to generate the revenue for the conservation area and bring people here into town for recreational purposes. You may not know it, but at one point in time, we had over 20,000 guests in the upper part of the conservation area on an annual basis. Calculating specifically with regard to what the input is in terms of people, days, travel within the area owned by the town, the lower third of the conservation area, we estimate that there's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10,000 people who use that particular part of the creek as well. So that's the jewel of the creek and the area around the Maricopa Mine. But there will be some allocated specifically for use at the stables, the Spur Ross Stables, which will, could conceivably be domestic use as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mattley.
I have a quick question. Groundwater storage, how are you receiving that? Taking runoff? I mean, taking runoff, say, from what goes down the street of Cave Creek, as opposed to taking it and then just putting it into a wash, can you recapture that water? And would that become groundwater storage?
Counselor, what I was thinking more than anything, again, looking at the difference between what Cave Creek is using on an annual basis and the allotment that we have in the Central Arizona Project for now, is taking that water, right, CAP water, not surface water as you described, and using that to find some way to bank that water to our benefit.
Vice Mayor Lamarcus?
Have you guys looked at, I know Bill Allen's looked at this different capacity, perhaps, over the years, and you're on Planning Commission again, but is there any feasible locations for recharge wells here in Cave Creek that would justify whatever capital investment would take to, you know, filter and purify the water to the point where it can be recharged? Is there an aquiferous and stuff that would, would conducive to that, that we have control over, or DMO at this point? Is that one of the things you've been looking at?
Vice Mayor, I certainly would have to defer to Dr. Allen on that, but my understanding is that the opportunities for groundwater recharge and recovery in this area are fairly limited. There's some opportunity that's maybe a little more favorable on the Carefree side of the mountain there, but here at Cave Creek, it's a little more limited.
Because it's more rivers rather than ponds or?
Relatively shallow, is I understand. Thank you.
One more. Just a question, Councilman Esser question.
If these exchanges become part of your recommendations in an effort to protect our valuable water resource, would it be something memorialized, like say, our, would there be written, dark?
Counselor Esser, as these things come forward beyond just concept, preliminary to actual agreements, I would anticipate you're going to enter into some sort of intergovernmental agreement with whatever agency that would be. Yes, you thought it would be very much a written public document that you all would have to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frye.
Thank you.
Do that. There is a public comment on item number three? Marie?
I guess so.
Does anyone wish to speak? Okay, we'll come back to that. Thank you, without counsel.
Move the authorized staff into a word, I've made this for drought mitigation strategy such as water banking exchanges with other government agencies, water conservation program. Second?
Motion made in a second, Attorney General Bunch?
Yeah. It's really good. I would, I would ask that you guys don't use a ton of staff time and do as much work individually as you can, because they're kind of busy anyway with other issues that we've got. It's always a good idea with the surplus, to stay at somewhere unfortunate or aquiferous, Dr. Allen has described over the years, multiple times, it's a shallow bathtub, so it's in some direction, and it don't hold water and what it does holds a lot of our steam. So there are better places to do it. You guys can do a share deal with Phoenix or somebody who's guided out by the CAP in western Arizona. That'd be really beneficial to us to be able to get to it later. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Lamarcus, right, a second?
My observation is that I should be exploring these issues and with importance. If you need any help, I'll support it 100%. And again, I don't expect a DMO now, which will play and which won't play, but I think we should look at all, all alternatives and explore those intelligently. And if they turn out to be a winning proposition, we can take one step further. But I can appreciate the effort and foresight to do this now rather than wait until, if we have a crisis, we have a crisis. So thank you.
Councilman Esser?
I am somewhat reluctant to agree there, but if November first is ninety days, and we see something by then, I guess I can support it.
Nick Nelson, council. Councilman Bunch, if I could suggest a final motion to tag on to the end, and will report to council by the second meeting, let's give them all the work. By the second meeting of November 2015. There was an article, again, the committee does not negotiate make deals, that's not what the committee does, but they do do tremendous work for this community, specifically on an item that we all very much depend. There was an article yesterday, Sunday, New York Times, I've given a copy of it, teaching my fellow council members, to Dr. Allen, and also the Sonoran News. If you can't read it, it's called, the title, "How the West Overcounts Its Water Supplies." It focuses on two states, California and Arizona. I would recommend reading that article. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes clearly have it. That was the six people opposed. Item number four, council, discussion and approval of resolution R-2015-23, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2015-16, establishing the alternative expenditure limitation amount. Mr. Ray?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. This is the approval of the final budget as it was amended when we adopted the tentative budget, and this is the final budget motion. So I think we've answered all the questions that were posed to us in the meeting and in our individual meetings. If you have any questions, though, at this point on the budget, I'd be happy to answer.
Questions from council? I think you were so thorough, Mr. Weyton, that you've taken any question away from council.
Do you have anything to add? No, I don't, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay, there is public hearing on item number four.
I'm a associate.
Who wishes to speak on this side of the reason? The budget?
Okay.
Okay, we are about to come. Councilman Esser, take this.
Move to approve resolution R-2015-23, a resolution of the mayor and council of the town of Cave Creek, finally determining and adopting estimated or proposed expenditures by the town of Cave Creek for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, establishing the alternative expenditures limitation, limitation amount, and declaring that such shall constitute the adopted budget of the town of Cave Creek for such fiscal year.
Give the second? No, thank you. Councilman Esser?
Well, it's probably the best budget I've ever seen, and you're going to be congratulated. I understood it, the pie chart, and the expenditures, and it blows me away that it's as large as it is, but our town's growing, so that's all I've got. You did a good job.
Councilman Bunch?
Thanks to everyone that wanted to help it.
Anything else from council? Marie, this is financial, so please call the roll.
Councilman Esser?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Bunch?
Yes.
Counselor Facy?
Yes.
Counselor Lamar?
Yes.
Counselor McSweeney?
Yes.
Yes, by a vote of six to zero, the motion passes. Thank you, council, on the five, council discussion and direction regarding implementing a chemical treatment system in order to change the chemical makeup of the waste water being delivered to the wastewater treatment plant, Mr. Council.
Ladies and gentlemen, as you know, we've had about a year and a half long war since I've been here with the orders, and it preceded me by several years before that, all related to the collection system in town and its ultimate deposition down at the wastewater treatment plant. So after a long, arduous period, we determined that we should find a chemical that we believe when injected into our wastewater stream at Rancho Manoan wastewater lift station, will effectively reduce the hydrogen sulfide levels that we generated in pipeline as much as 90%, thereby causing a severe reduction in hydrogen sulfide that is deposited at our treatment plant, and therefore it will not blank out our odor scrubber. Periods where it's just way more than the odor scrubber can handle. So the goal here is to reduce those odor levels down so that scrubber can handle it, and thereby we will have happy citizens free in the neighborhood down there. Short and sweet.
Thank you. Question from council? Counselor Esser?
I have two, and one of them is the sole source 50,000 per year, and you indicated in the backup information that it's used by the city fleet.
Right. Scottsdale has also used it as well.
So there are other municipalities that have used this successfully?
Yes, we actually spoke about this with Scottsdale recently when we had a meeting.
And that 50,000 is kind of, are you going to run out of money?
No, it's based on an average daily flow of 250,000 gallons per day, and when you look at certain times of the year, we may have 300,000 gallons a day, so we use a little more. Other times of year, like summer now, when people are gone, the numbers go down, so I believe our numbers are pretty valid. We don't see a lot of sewer connections coming online here in the next several months, so.
Second question. What's Plan B?
Plan B would be what Scottsdale is going to now, and those are called speed cones. Scottsdale obviously has a whole lot more money than we do to implement these kind of devices. I've mentioned speed cones before in my discussions on this topic. It's another more advanced technology and significantly more expensive. In our case, we're probably looking at something on the order of a quarter million to a half million dollars.
Well, and probably the next item, will the lift stations repairs and improvements help?
The ones that are the additional items I have on here? Other items I have on the agenda tonight, we don't really formulate anything associated with the odors. They're more equipment backups so that I don't have other problems in the wastewater system. I've got several wastewater items on here tonight. They're not really related to the odor.
That's all I have for now.
Vice Mayor Lamar, question?
Yeah, I think it seems that, just like some of the other measures that we've attempted, is dealing with symptom rather than the cause. Am I correct in understanding that the fundamental cause of the odor problem, the overpowering of the scrubber, is the low flow, that we're not running to capacity and therefore there isn't sufficient water to dilute sulfur, and that's really the problem?
One smaller piece of the bigger complicated puzzle here. We have grease traps in town, we have restaurants that contribute to grease traps, we have staff who goes out and checks these grease traps, and we try to work closely with the restaurants to make sure that they're pumped on a regular basis. Sometimes we're successful, but not always. Sometimes we're successful and we have pumpers and companies that go ahead and dump on us anyway, and we've been plagued with that a lot here lately, be it septic haulers or grease haulers, and so we get overwhelmed with this stuff anyway. Obviously, since I came here, we've implemented a number of procedures that are all geared towards trying to reduce the odor problem. Now cleaning all the uptown sewers twice a year, we clean the trunk lines down in the Carefree Highway twice a year, we manage the grease trap program more stringently, we take care of our lift stations, we back those up on a regular basis to try and get solids that accumulate in the bottom of the lift stations out. So obviously, some more flow would help. I've said before, dilution is the solution, but if it's not flow, but flow's just a small piece, then if, are there other measures we could take or more efficient measures we could take or better measures we could take, either upstream or in the grease trap management that could also help so that we don't have to go to the $500,000 solution? We're working on all those solutions. The mayor's brought up before another option, we can have this timely dry sewer neighborhoods at some point, we have some more flow, can expand our collection system. That's more of a long-term solution. We're much more aggressive about our maintenance of the scrubber down at the wastewater treatment plant, and that is helping some, so we've already implemented many of the steps to get in the right direction. That was kind of low-hanging fruit, all those things, this is taking the next step, and as new opportunities present themselves and we see things that we can do differently, we'll implement those solutions.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Litsky, question?
As complaints have come in, I've seen the illegal dumping issue be sort of first and foremost in our explanation for the occasional extraordinary odor problems. Are we doing anything to try to mitigate that? Where would the dumping be occurring? And A, and B, what are we doing in terms of trying to monitor it or stop it?
First of all, I don't want to make it look like we're shirking responsibility for the rest of the maintenance of the system and saying, oh, all the problems are from waste dumping.
I wasn't suggesting that.
I think that may have been perceived in the past, but we'll clear that up. The waste dumping that we've been having happen, this has happened on pretty much deserted streets at night, and the dry sewer neighborhoods, you know the area out by your house pretty well, Mr. Mayor, we had people actually go and dump septic trucks into the dry sewer pipelines, and it has nowhere to go, and we had to spend town dollars to go and pump and back through this material out and then haul it off. We took some steps, we actually tap weldings on manhole lids down so they can't get into them, but we can grind the weld off if we have to, if we need to get into it at some point in the future. Peter and I have talked extensively recently about possibly doing more cat welding on more lids in other parts of town. Now they seem to have found places where they can dump on us on live active sewers, and we'll have days when the treatment plant will have a complete process upset and it takes us two or three days to recover from. So we are getting hit by things, and these can cause odors in their own right because it upsets our biological process in the plant to the point that the plant dies off, and then the plant doesn't function right. So our goal is to try to find who's doing it, but at 4:00 in the morning, Marshall Stein's not out there driving around looking for somebody with a big truck dumping into a manhole. We haven't asked him, I guess.
Are there likely scenarios, likely spots, can we put cameras out? I mean, that's short of a quarter of a million or half a million dollar solution.
We've been chasing it recently with video camera, taking the pipelines, we identify where we seem to have problems, we video camera the pipelines and we keep chasing backup manholes. It's a sort of a diligent search to figure this out, but we are working towards that goal, and hopefully we can find out, you know, if somebody sees us coming and they'll skedaddle from here and they'll go over and dump someplace else. So, and it's not just our town, this happens valleywide, everybody gets hit with this. We need to do a weekend to try to stop it here.
Mayor, council, another point is, it's just not one auto, it's more than one. I think coming into this next year, we should look at refitting some of those more active, you can't tap, can't tap well in active sewers, can't sit it up, but I think we need to refit some of those sewer manholes with lockable covers. Similar places to do that, I think there are some prime candidates that we should do similar between 10 and 20 of those, and that'll help tremendously, so.
And the cost for 10 or 20 would be approximately what?
These lids are about $600 to $700 apiece for the pentagonal, not that they have to actually block, since they become almost more of a water tight lid, but unless you have a special wrench to hold this thing, you can't get in a manhole.
Counselor, please, you have a question.
Vice Mayor Lamar? I guess that's what's happens when we start asking specific questions because then we start chasing rabbits around the field, and this isn't the place for it, but this is a problem that has lingered, and it's very, very, for the folks that live down there and smell this stuff, it's not fun, and it doesn't speak well for the town that it's continuing, I mean, I think we all agree on that. And I know that we've tried a lot of different symptom fighters, but it's time that we have a master plan that has Plan A and Plan B to get this resolved to the extent that we can, that we're in the parameters of everybody else, that every once in a while it smells, but not as much as it has, and apparently not as much as any of you think, so we should. So let's have a plan in place.
Mayor, council, I do think part of the plan is the bioxide. Other communities have used it, they've been very successful at using it, Scottsdale, Phoenix. So I think in Plan A, this is a good first step, it's going to be a first solid step. I also believe that we should increase whether it's affluent down there or increase our flows to the north, these things we sit down, but I think this is a good step, I think it would be very productive, I think, over the next 60 to 90 days, we'll have a good sense of how, because you've got to adjust the quantities and whatever, but we'll have a good sense of how that is working, and in the meantime, I think somewhere, I think it's close to $1,000 a manhole to do some more wash, we should start taking some of those steps, because.
I just want to put out there an order of, it needs to get resolved.
Peter, am I hearing you say we don't need a Plan B?
No, I think there's always a Plan B and C. I think you need to see how successful Plan A is, because if we implement Plan A, which is the bioxide, and try to do Plan B 15 days from now, it doesn't help us, but I do think we should do some concurrent items like locking down the manholes, we'll have a contract out and do that, it's going to be a little pricey, but I think there's some very prime candidates that seem to be popular with these haulers that we can lock down, and that will deter them. Would it stop them? Probably not 100%, but if we start making it more difficult for them, because they'll stay down in Phoenix or Scottsdale.
My only counsel here, my only counsel here is that the red light's getting brighter, I'd rather hell us make the decision that works than have someone tell us what we have to do in the interim.
Counselor, classy question?
It isn't so much a question, it's just a comment, I did go with Peter and Mr. Prince on to Scottsdale along with Tom, and he's not here, but Scottsdale did, a gentleman that we met with 35 years in the business or something, and he felt that the route that we were taking is just about will guarantee to some degree a very good reduction, and then he said Scottsdale has done all kinds of things, they've gone through a process, and then they got to the process that they're at now, which is very expensive, but, and they also, I concur, that they have problems with people, you know, being there, stuff all over Scottsdale too, and it causes problems with their sewer and water. That is the one on the 101, that's supposed to was, was very enlightening. We also saw all of the, I guess, all the equipment that's there, which is pretty amazing, but at the same time, I think that this is the route to go, and I concur that we should also lock them down. I like the idea of cameras, some of that area is so rural and cameras are so inexpensive, they can look like anything in the tree, just to try and capture some of those people who are doing this, so I think it's a good plan.
Just one comment, if we're going to go and try to lock these things down, I would assume, if I'm one of those guys dumping this stuff, that I've got every kind of wrench to unlock every kind of thing that's been invented, so I'd just say, let's not spend the money until we know for sure that we've got the extra special, you know, lock that they don't have the wrench for, because I assume they'll have all of them, right?
With that particular program, yeah, he's wanting to set cons to it, you have to, so we actually want to find a better system than just having a special allen wrench or something like that. I agree.
And there is a single supplier of this chemical?
Well, with the sole source supplier. Sole source equal.
Therefore, the price has been controlled. What I would suggest is after we try this, if we see that it's working, then contact Phoenix and Scottsdale and try to get in on thereby, maybe we'll get a better price for next year because this is pricey. Okay, there is a public comment on Agenda Item Number Five.
Mike Beckham?
I'm Mr. Mayor, council, I'm the head of the homeowners association for Los Ventanas, the unfortunate community that's sitting right next to you guys. Plant went online in 2010, my first complaint to the town was in December, 2010. Ever since that thing opened up, it smelled. Now, somebody asked about Plan B, there is a Plan B, and it's sure not going to be sealing manhole covers, it's going to be spending money to put an extra air scrubber, I know a lot more about this. By the way, first of all, David does a heck of a job, he's been fantastic working with us in the community, he's explaining things, and so is Peter, they both worked their tail off in this whole thing. To my mind, they got dumped a bunch of garbage on top of their head to figure out the problem, that's a bunch of bologna in my first place. So since 2010, and we've been sitting in that air, I can't, I'm so upset, you guys, I can't even talk about it right now, let me just go back through here real quick. Council meeting, October 25th, October 3rd, 2005, here's what the town council said at the time, guidelines for placing a new facility in the community, right below that, this, these are minutes from the meeting, must be a good neighbor. What's the first thing, right underneath there? No odors. Second thing is utilization of natural buffers and aesthetic treatments. Has anybody been out there? It's a truck zone, okay? And when we start talking about nickel and dime, I hate to tell everybody this, but that thing costs 26 million dollars, and if you're going to sit here and tell me, oh, we're going to try this and try that, David knows exactly, if this thing doesn't work, he knows exactly what he's got to do to fix this thing, it's what Scottsdale does and it's what Phoenix does. The whole thing is we're talking nickel and dime money, we can't talk nickel and dime money on this thing when you guys put 26 million dollars into a plant that doesn't work. It's just plain simple, you can't do it, it's not, the town is obligated to fix this thing, obligated. I've got a whole bunch of other things. Proximity to setbacks, how about this one? No existing or future residents should be within 660 feet or one eighth of a mile of the plant. The old town, the town engineer at the time even said that's not a good spot to put it, and the town still put it there. Who made that decision? I don't know, but to have the town even discuss, well, maybe we'll do this, maybe we'll do that, these guys are working their tail off, and I know they're doing the best they can, and this bioxide, it will work, because the big problem is the flow of the sulfur gas coming from downtown that sits down there that overloads the scrubber, sit at the plant, and just for my last little comment here, you asked about, well, what about the pumps and things like that, because Dave's going to get to that, here I'm taking it, one day, grabbing people over, it smells like holy heck in our backyard, I'm ticked, I get in the car and I drive over there, there's a fellow sitting inside the plant. Guess what? The pump broke. I said, okay, the pump broke. He goes, well, we don't have any parts to fix it. I said, wait a second, you don't have backup parts to fix the pump that's sitting in here? No. I said, well, how long is it going to take for you to get the pump parts? I don't know, 24 to 48 hours. I said, so you're telling me that we got to sit there in our house and smell this stuff for 24 to 48 hours because the town hasn't given you the pump parts to fix the darn thing? Where do the pump parts come from? Sweden or someplace, right? Yeah, perfect, yeah, so maybe David needs the money to have these extra spare parts around so he can fix the darn thing, so we aren't sitting in there. And it's not just our community guys, you ask anybody who goes up and down Carefree Highway and smells that stuff, my staff, people down the neighborhood, anybody up and down Carefree Highway is a reflection on the town, and this town ain't going nowhere if it can't fix a sewer plant. All right, thank you.
Let's bring this back and get council involved, Councilor Bunch. Let's bring this back and get council on, Councilman Budge.
Move to approve expenditure funds to be focal for sole source purchase of the chemical treatment system, bioxide for proprietary chemical order to change the chemical makeup of the wastewater being delivered to the wastewater treatment plant not to exceed $50,000 per year.
She made it a second, Councilman Budge?
Then involve somewhat, one of the things that we might understand, we're pumping uphill from Rancho Muniyana through the rest of the hill up here and that stuff sits in that pipe a long time. Anybody's ever done any home composting in a closed environment? You get an anaerobic activity, the stuff stinks to high heaven. There's not enough oxygen in there, so we're going to inject that with the bioxide treatment. Hopefully the stuff delivers to the plant at that point won't be as bad or as costly and it might even reduce maintenance cost in the treatment plant. It's a good idea overall.
Councilman Esser, you have a second?
Let's make Plan A work. Long overdue.
Councilman Clancy?
I already stated what?
Council, let's get Vice Mayor Lamari.
The consensus is that this is a solution that has about a 90 percent reduction in the odor. That should solve the problem. I hope it solves the problem, but my point again is, the problem needs to get solved. So let's hope that it's fine. If it's not fine, we need to figure out a way to have a plant that doesn't stink to high heaven and because neighbors are a point. It's been long, it's been too long.
Okay, I think in the future, I'll bring something to council, and this is Plan B. And Plan B is a long range plan. Canyon Range, Estata de Choya, Los Ventanas are all dry lined. They can all take the look up. But in order to do that, you, we would have to give our citizens at least 18 months notice that it's coming because there's quite a bit of expense and get them ready for it. That's a long range plan. Marie, financier, financial, the role of this.
Councilwoman Fenske? Aye. Councilman Budge?
Yes.
Councilman Esser?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lamari?
Yes.
Councilman Litske?
Yes.
Mayor Francis?
Yes, by a vote of six to zero, the most, thank you, council. Council, we're going to take a five minute recess. We'll go back and get the second question, ladies and gentlemen.